Before we begin, please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. First on the agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. I don't have any additions or subtractions to the agenda. Is there any thoughts on that from any of the members? Seeing none, we will move on to Citizen Speak. Maura, I don't see anyone there, so I'm assuming we don't have anyone for Citizen Speak. All right, moving on from there. In connection with Citizen Speak, I want to briefly relay to the public two pieces of very good news that we received just today, and I'm going to relay this in connection with Citizen Speak because I hope, we hope to get more in-depth information on these in a future meeting, perhaps at Citizen Speak first. The Full Day Kindergarten Grant has been included as part of the Conference Committee budget that has been approved by the Legislature and has been sent to the Governor for approval. The effect of that is that this district, as part of the $18.5 million statewide grant, this district will receive $120,000 towards Full Day Kindergarten, which is level funding over last year, and the effect of it is that the, for the parents of kindergarten students is that the fees will remain the same for this year. Now, that is pending approval from the Governor. So, this is a good step forward. The 200 members of the Legislature have approved this, and now if the one member of the executive branch agrees with it, we will be in good shape for Full Day Kindergarten for this coming year. And I would also, so in connection with that, you know, we want to recognize the efforts of our representatives in the Legislature, State Representative Walter Timmeltie, State Senator Brian Joyce, who, both of whom worked very hard in order to secure this level funding for this year and in order to help the school district. We also want to acknowledge that right now, the Conference Committee budget that's been approved by the Legislature also contains an additional $200,000 for, quote, "an innovative pilot program to address the early literacy proficiency gap and to increase access to early education in the town of Milton," and that's something that was added to the budget by Senator Joyce. So, we certainly want to acknowledge the efforts of State Representative Timmeltie, Senator Joyce, and also Vice Chair Becky Padera and Member Leroy Walker, who took time from their own schedules and went up to the Legislature to lobby for this as well. So, it's been quite an effort, both on the state and local level, and we hope that if the Governor approves it, then we'll be in good shape for the coming year. So, the reason I say that in connection with Citizen Speak is that we intend to invite the representatives from the Legislature in, if they want to come in at a future meeting, to describe, to describe that and to tell us how that all came about. The second piece of good news that I'll inform the public of in connection with Citizen Speak is a grant that the town was, competitive grant that the town was awarded just today from the Department of Energy Resources Green Communities Division, and that is a Department of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs in the state, the Department of Energy Resources. That department has awarded the town of Milton $244,248 for projects that were proposed in connection with the town of Milton's Green Communities Competitive Grant application. And it just so happens that all of those projects that this $244,000 is going to go towards, they are all projects of the Milton Public Schools, and they include exterior lighting, exterior lighting retrofits, interior lighting, refrigeration controls for all of the various schools around town. So, this is great news for us because that is going to allow the schools to use this money towards, towards improving the infrastructure in the schools. And again, I say this in connection with Citizen Speak because we hope to invite Bill Ritchie, and Bill Ritchie is the head of the Department of Consolidated Facilities here in town, and Bill was really the driving force behind this application. And it is, it was a competitive grant application, and Bill is, deserves great credit for making sure that our town received this nearly $250,000 towards school infrastructure costs. So, so that's great news, and we hope to get more on those two things that just happened today. We hope to get more news at Citizen Speak in the future on those two things. I don't know if anyone has anything to add on those, since I just injected them at this point of the meeting. Does anyone have anything to add on those? We hope to hear more, hope to hear more later on those. So, now that I have elongated the Citizen Speak portion of the, of the program, just so that we could wait for the air conditioning to come on, which it has, and I'll make things much more pleasant. It was, it felt a little bit like the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia in 1787 in here because it was sweltering, but now it's, now it's much better. So, we can move on to the Superintendent's Report. Mrs. Gormly.
Thank you, Chairman Zulus. Very briefly, the chairperson asked me to report out on special education. In our work with the CPAC, we're scheduling a meeting. Leroy Walker and Mary Kelly have met with the CPAC, and we weren't able to schedule at the end of the school year, so Tracy Grandow was away on vacation. When she returns, Leroy Walker, Mary Kelly, Tracy Grandow, Janet Shannon, and I will meet to go over the notes from the CPAC meetings. And in relation to the CPAC, at last week's meeting, the President of CPAC, Michelle Conley, spoke and mentioned extended-year special education services. And so, I had discussed this possibility with Leroy Walker earlier in the school year, and we have a tentative date, waiting for Ms. Conley's confirmation, to have Ms. Conley and another member of the CPAC come in and sit down with us, and our lawyer who deals in, our special ed attorney, and go over our policy around extended-year services. So, I think that that will clarify that issue. At the last meeting, very exciting, really a year and a half in the makings, just to repeat, we have signed the contract with Public Consulting Group. I want to recognize Leroy Walker and Glenn Pavlicek, and Tracy Grandow and Karen Klasby. They did a tremendous amount of work on that RFP. They carefully reviewed every one of the proposals, and so that contract has been signed. A kickoff meeting is tentatively being scheduled in late August where the CPAC, I'm asking for a school committee representative, once we settle on that date, and representatives from all different staff groups will come to a two- or three-hour planning meeting to map out the evaluation with the firm. Focus groups will happen per the consulting firm's calendar in October. There'll be onsite observations after the report is corrected. Everyone will have an opportunity to read the draft and the action planning, and their plan is to conduct a six-month checkout and to report out to you. And so, I'll send you a more detailed calendar as they communicate with us before their planning meeting, but that's exciting, those plans are exciting. Important in the world of special education is the importance of the school committee's goal around social-emotional learning, which we'll discuss later during the school committee's goals. In the area of professional development, through this last contract, as parents well know, and the viewing public should know, we had an increased amount of time dedicated to professional development. And next year, we're going to start reporting out in my email blast and at these meetings the highlights of some of that professional development because parents are interested in the professional development that their children's teachers are involved in. I want you to know this, last year, we had professional development on those half-days for paraprofessionals in the characteristics of disabilities and strategies for student support. We had PAC training for all teachers. We had inclusion, professional development for our teachers and special teachers, and our special ed teachers. But you should also know this, last year, that all of these initial initiatives were in competition with the implementation of our new evaluation tool that required a tremendous amount of professional development with the teachers. It was a successful implementation. It's done. It was very successful. A lot of professional development for our teachers. We trained teacher leaders to work with the teachers so that before grievances would come to a principal's or our level, these teacher leaders at every school were answering the questions. And PAC really required, the implementation of PAC, a lot of professional development training on the administration, and we had a successful rollout. I sent the school committee a few emails so you would know what happened in other communities, but that, all those initiatives competed for our time. Special education is one of the priorities next year when we're now planning next year's professional development program. But I'll send this list of over 20 initiatives in special education to the school committee so you'll know. In the advancement budget, remembering that we've implemented, you funded through the advancement budget to the Warren Committee, to the town meeting, an inclusion specialist, and so that inclusion specialist, we're still in the midst of hiring that person. When that person comes on board, I think that person might be the best one for us to discuss this inclusion task force, to have that in conjunction with the CPAC, for the inclusion specialist to hear from the staff, to hear from the administrators, but to hear from the CPAC when they talk about an inclusion task force. It would be useless if the inclusion specialist wasn't co-chairing that with perhaps a parent and an administrator. So, that's part of our goal this summer, to get that in place. In your regular special education budget, you funded an additional position at the high school to meet the ed plans. That person has been hired. In the world of special education over this summer, since Tracy Grandow was appointed the position, we've hired a new special education chairperson at the high school, a new adjustment counselor at the Cunningham School, the PS Middle School step teacher transferred to a regular position at SED, a new step teacher there. Our out-of-district coordinator retired, so we have a new out-of-district special education coordinator, and that person travels to all of the sites and sits down with the staff, checks in on the Milton children that are in these placement, represents the district at all of the IEP meetings, and then reports back to us. The Tucker preschool, we have one person who services as a chairperson at the Tucker, being a smaller school, and takes one day at the preschool as the SED chair. That's a new, that person was reassigned, and that position is being filled. In the area of communications, obviously the school committee communicating with CPAC, and next year, our goal is to have a CPAC representative, perhaps the President of CPAC, join us. Ms. Varela and Ms. Padera can tell you, at the PTO President's Meeting monthly. So, it will be like a seventh school, and I think that it will bring the issues of the CPAC to the PTO presidents who directly report back. You know, I have, not to patronize, two of the best people here. I say it's my favorite night of the month. They're an outstanding group. You can brainstorm by them. They decipher what to share with their, with their PTO members. In closing the achievement gap with the internal assessments, we're very much looking forward to these PAC results coming back in September and October to really analyze the achievement gap, the proficiency gap that we have in the world of special education. Our preschool, I've said publicly that our preschool 10 short years ago was one classroom, and now we have four classrooms, and Holly Concannon wants daily meetings with the three of us as she watches the enrollment in our preschool. And so, we now have four full classrooms, and we actually, Ms. Padera has asked us over the summer to come up with a space proposal, to look at where we've been, what the birth rates are, what the projections are from NIESC, and I have to tell you, when you talk about your goals and you talk about marketing our elementary schools, we're filled. And so, we're able to service all of the children, but we're looking at space issues around the preschool. And I have, and I've sent to you, each of the principals quickly reported in, in the world of special education, this preschool is one of the jewels of the system. And this school committee, many of the members sitting here, were here when we voted this NEC program so that children don't have to drive two hours a day on a special ed bus. We have a partnership with the New England Center for Children, and I'm here to tell you on behalf of those children and their families that teach, that program is flourishing. We have another program that really uses the model, but it's a Milton Public School program. We hired the teacher in that program, and in addition, we have three classrooms with role models and three and four-year-olds with special needs. So, again, that, you know, we might run some kind of a tour for the school committee to really get into our preschool around your schedules in September, October, to see it is really amazing. And the inclusion, you know, people talk about finding alternative space for the preschool, but it is amazing to see those children in the halls of the Cunningham College Court and coming in with their siblings. It is, again, one of the jewels of the system. From Dr. Spalding, we had never reported out to you, has implemented, and I could ask Ms. Varela to do this, an eye-to-eye program. It's the only national mentoring movement that pairs students who have learning disabilities and attention deficit disorder with college and high school mentors. Using arts-based curriculum, mentors help their mentees understand the unique way of learning and thinking and building their self-esteem, and Dr. Karen Spalding piloted that program this year with students from Curry College. And so, that was hugely successful. Dr. Sheila Cuxtis reported in that the step integration into the Glover School was very successful, and it was a successful integration. Again, Dr. Cuxtis has set up a communication system with the families, between the families and the teachers at the Glover School, and I would say, and I think the school committee hearing at the beginning about the implementation and the moving of that program, it's fully integrated into the Glover School now. Dr. Elaine Germai reported in, unbelievable programming in, really integrating in the Tucker, the advancement initiatives, and the number of children with IEPs that were enrolled in so many of those initiatives. Jonathan Redden reported in. Again, we could do a tour of the Milton Public Schools. We don't talk enough about our two LEAP programs, programs for students with significant developmental delays, intellectual impairments, and multiple handicap, capping issues and disabilities. Those programs are flourishing, and the examples of inclusion of those children in the Cunningham School are just phenomenal. And I was struck today, meeting with Mr. Redden, the principal of the Cunningham, who is running, we just told Mr. Zulus, a 700 small school, I told you on an email, and he does it, he does it unbelievably.
700 students.
What did I say?
700, just.
Oh, 700 students, 700 adults, 700, in my language, 700 means students. And I was struck by his commitment to special education, and he took, he has integrated, everyone should understand, the children who have these extended-year services, they sign up for, we do their programs, we tailor their programs, so if they have two hours of service, they enroll in two of our extended-day sessions. And again, Mr. Redden has taken that program and worked with it, and I would say at the end of the day, every day, he really is responsible for 1,000 students, and he's integrating all of those programs. So, he has sent highlights. James Jett is very proud that the Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital awarded $5,000 grant. One of our adjustment counselors has created a decompress and work, stress relief room at Milton High School, and we received a grant from BID Milton. And the MFE also funded iPad, cards for iPads for the iPads that exist in the high school special education rooms. And again, the expansion of the CoTrot program and the transitions postgraduate program at Milton High School are two of the highlights that James Jett reported in. So, I can send this report to the school committee. Chairman Zulus had asked me for a brief update, and I appreciate all of your efforts on behalf of special education, and we look for planning this summer to get off to a fast start at the beginning of September. Any questions or comments? Thank you. I want to give you a report. I emailed the school committee, but to report out to the public, I spoke to the public and the school committee about an incident involving Ken Arbert, who retired as Milton High School's Department Head of Guidance in 2013. Yesterday, Mr. Arbert pleaded guilty in Norfolk Superior Court to five counts of larceny in connection with the collection of fees for advanced placement tests at Milton High School during the 2009 through 2013 school year. Mr. Arbert has been sentenced to two years probation. He has to pay back to the Milton Public Schools $31,607 within 10 days, and he was directed by the judge that he will never work in another public, private, or parochial school. Just to outline for the viewing public, the school committee is aware that when this first came to the attention of Milton High School staff, that certain records regarding the collection and payment of fees for advanced placement tests appeared to be incomplete, we immediately reported the matter to local school, local law enforcement authorities. We cooperated fully with the Milton Police Department and the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office during the investigation of this incident. Last year, we commissioned an outside independent audit review of our practices and procedures in the area to make sure that we were doing everything possible to prevent anything like this ever happening again. As a result, last fall, we recommended to the school committee a new cash management policy to strengthen our controls. Those controls and policy, we educated all of the employees, and we're monitoring the implementation of all of those policies. Thirdly, no student scores were impacted, and every AP test was properly administered. This was a case of theft by one employee, a theft from Milton High School students. As the district attorney said to me, this individual stole money from students, and the money that is sent to the district from the College Board. He did not steal taxpayers' money, but in my impact statement, which the judge reiterated when he sentenced Mr. Arbert, worse than stealing the money, was the impact that he may have had on students who might not have taken the exams because of the practices and the theft that he was leading. And finally, we deeply appreciate the professionalism of the Milton Police Department and the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office in this matter. They work closely with us, collaboratively with us, and I have to tell you, they were sensitive to the issues in the school, and, but they were tireless in their efforts to bring about justice, as we were. Any comments? Very briefly, I've already mentioned to you that our summer school, day three, it seems like, week 17, is in full swing. The summer school enrichment, the summer scholars, Community Schools is running at Cunningham School, six weeks of Community Schools program. Milton High School Bridge Program, we identify rising ninth graders who have a transition program to Milton High School here. The Calculus Project, again, rising eighth and ninth graders who are given supports so that the goal of that project is that all students enroll in and achieve in a calculus course. There are music programs. If you come by later in August, you'll be able to see the marching band. They practice every single day. There are athletic programs through all the schools. There'll be two weeks, again, many parents at this table could talk about the Rising fifth to sixth graders, learning about PS School, that's one of the most successful camps, two of the, two different weeks in the summer. Drivers Education, there's an art camp that happens here in the Milton Public Schools, and a, students from Japan who are living in several Milton fam, with Milton families operate out of our school and gather here every day and then go off for field trips. So, we're alive and well. Those camps are going on, they're thriving, and until we meet again, those programs will be going on till the first week of August. And I would encourage the viewing public, we're contacted every day, but all of our back-to-school information for preschool, kindergarten, K through 12 is all posted on our website with the times of the schools, and we are registering children. Families, parents are in here every single day registering children, pre-K through grade 12.
All set?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. We have added to the agenda, perhaps for the first time, a Vice Chair's report. So, I will turn it over to the Vice Chair for the Vice Chair's report.
Okay. My Vice Chair's report, I'd ask Mike Lynch to come up from MPAG. This is really kind of an MPAG report. So, for those that aren't aware, MPAG, which stands for Milton Public Access and Government TV, right? Did I say it right?
MPAG.
Yeah.
It's Milton Public Education and Government TV.
And Government TV, sorry. Is a board which I am the school committee representative on, and it's a, basically, who brings us, they decide kind of some of the things that are programmed on the Milton Access Television. Mike Lynch is in charge of this, and we've been meeting quite a bit lately, talking about a, an opportunity for the Milton High School. There's a studio that they have at the Pierce right now that's well-used by Pierce students in after-school programs and such, and so we've been wanting for a couple of years, I would say, to build a studio in the high school that we could access for some of our school committee meetings, as well as access for the high school programming, after-school, possibly even summer enrichment for elementary school students as well, just to get this new technology to our students. And so, the board has very generously approved a proposal, which I will let Mike talk about.
Okay, thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. For the viewers at home that might not know me, my name is Michael Lynch. I'm the executive director for Milton Access TV. Our formal name is MPAG. We do business at Milton Access TV, so just to not confuse anyone. And I'm here tonight to walk you through a proposal for a studio I'd like to put here at the high school. So, with that, I'll start my presentation. So, to give you some of the history, so like Ms. Padera said, Milton Access TV, we cover all of the school committee meetings and other important events that take place at the high school. We're also responsible for our public programming and for government programming, so we film all of our selectmen's meetings, town meetings, things like that. So, this, the conversation really started when the school committee system that we are using now really has become out of date and needs to be replaced. So, about probably three years ago, we looked at a few different options, one of which was just to sort of install and renovate the existing space we are in now, and we could have done that. But under previous administration at the high school level, and it was actually when we were in between principals, we were shown this room on the main floor, we call it Room 245, and it's the Black Box Theater. So, this room was actually the old stage of the middle school, when the middle school used to be at this campus. So, that's very important because it has about like 25-foot-high ceilings, which is ideal for a studio. And this actually was intended to be an original Black Box Theater, which means no windows in it, it was meant for acting, but due to funding restraints, it was never finished. So, we thought, what a great opportunity it would be, can we finish this room, put a studio in, and really accomplish a lot. So, for the high school studio, right off the bat, we can create after-school clubs and activities, and that's what we do at the Pierce, and I'm going to get into that in the next slide. We can roll this right into the curriculum with the We can roll this right into the curriculum of the school, so you can have classes throughout the day. Really, it'll provide training for and experience for students who are interested in the video production field. Again, one of my other slides, I'm going to show you my story of how I got involved with Milton Cable and how I became to become the executive director. Some of this stuff just is really important to kids. Some kids get left out. They might not be really into sports, really into languages, really into cooking, so this is just a really good technology field for kids to get involved with. It's a great resource, not only for the high school, but for the entire school system. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the entire administration for the school system works out of the high school, so that can be a great asset to them as well, not just the high school. And it could be used as a lab where teachers reserve time to use equipment. We could check this out, that, you know, if a teacher wanted to come in and, you know, teach a lesson or film something to show to their kids, why not use this room? We do it at the Pierce right now. And in addition to the high school, which will be, in addition to the studio, this room is also going to coexist with the computer lab, and we are actually going to install 15 new Macintosh computers, which might be the first in the school system. I know that a lot of them use Windows machines, but Mac machines are essential for video production and editing. So right now, my office is located at the Pierce Middle School. It's actually located in the same spot where it was at the old high school, the old studio. We recently renovated it. So how we started after-school programs, we participate in the Pierce After-School Sessions or Pass classes that are held once a week every semester, so four times a year. So what my students do is they, students learn once the ideas in hand to create storyboards, director scripts, pre-production procedures, filming in a live studio, and post-production elements. They get the whole experience. We walk them through. It's a six-to-eight-week program. We start right first day. Okay, kids, what do you want to do? You want to do a commercial about the activities at Pierce? Do you want to talk about things not to do at Pierce? We've done that before. So, and they really, once they have the idea, they go with it, and I'll show you a few pictures of that. Students will learn the basics at Pierce Pass Program, which will be well-suited for any type of program offered at the high school level. I do kind of feel bad now. I teach the kids basic studio production. They get to the high school, and there's nothing here. So wouldn't it be great just to continue on, and we can start them young in the sixth grade, and they can continue right on through 12th grade? To benefit that, the same equipment used at the Pierce studio will be installed at the high school, so our studios will be identical. So another really good point. So this is the room right now.
Excuse me, Mike, do you want to move to the slide?
Sorry, way behind my slides. All right, so this is the current setup in the room right now. Pictures a little distorted, but it's a pretty big room. So the bottom, oh, I'm doing the wrong computer. The bottom corner here, this is where the picture was taken that you just previously saw. So first, like I said, we wanted to replace the school committee setup, so with the install of the studio, I just want to give you like a brief kind of proposed school committee meeting setup that you could do. Improvements from your current setup, more microphones, which I know has been a request over the years. So we're actually putting in 16 microphones in the room. We'll be able to cover anyone that wants to come to the table and speak. We'll have a direct feed from the projector into our system to increase the quality of presentation seen at home. So right now, your meetings are very presentation-heavy, and from this angle, we just are able to capture it from a camera. So right off the bat, that'll make a huge difference to the people at home. We will be filming in high-definition, archiving, archiving in hi-def, filming in standard-def, so maybe we'll put a makeup room in. And we'll be improving the audio receivers in the room, so people at any point in the room will be able to hear the meeting loud and clear. I would like to note, I put at the bottom here, that this room will not go away, and the equipment we use in the auditorium will not go away. So in the event that a meeting was, you're anticipating a large audience, we can move to either room. We're not married to this room. We've actually moved school committee meetings before. We've had them here. We've had them at my office at Pierce, so we know that we can accommodate you there. This room is far bigger than my studio, so it should be a good setup. So this is the proposed studio setup, and I'm not going to highlight all the equipment we're putting in, but just to give you some brief information. So three-camera setup, it's pretty standard in the industry. One will have a teleprompter, so the students will be able to write scripts and load them into the prompter. Backdrop curtains are installed to shield the computers. So like I said, this is going to be a computer lab and a studio in one. We're installing backdrop curtains, which we need for the studio production anyways, and you can see here that the curtain goes three sides of their way around the room here. Can't block the door, so. A chroma key curtain will be installed to use virtual sets, a green screen, as kids call it. That's very exciting. We have one at the Pierce. The kids love it. We're really limited to size of the Pierce. Our studio is very small, so this is one way that we get away with it, and I'll show you some pictures. Virtual sets are, they're really, really cool. And in our comm system, we installed, so kids will be able to communicate from the control room to the studio. They'll learn director's cues and things like that. It directly records into our Mac for post-production editing, kind of technical, but really important. And then, like I said, the Mac lab will coexist in the space along the outer walls. So the switcher we're putting in, or the studio that we're putting in, it's called the Tricaster 860. The picture you see on the screen is the studio, the control room at my office. So this is just to give you a brief overview of what it would look like. Features and benefits, again, the virtual set creation and animation is huge. We have the ability for Skype interviews, which is really cool, and I show you in our demo reel, we actually last year did a Skype interview with someone from California. So again, very cool. The ability to go to eight camera inputs if we needed to. Built-in social media publishing, we can publish right to YouTube, Facebook, Instagram, anything like that. It's all integrated and built-in. Replay functionality, so if it was a live debate or some hot-button issue, we could do a live replay. And it has built-in graphics generator, as well as on-the-fly graphics. So again, kind of your whole, the whole thing. So these are some of the pictures of the virtual sets. That's one of our biggest claims to fame here at Milton Access is our virtual sets. And as you can see here, there's a bunch of different ones. You can be sitting behind a desk. You can be standing in a press box above a field. And if you picture a real person where the other people are in those pictures, everything else about that set is not real. So if you can imagine seeing that at home and thinking, where did Mike Lynch get all that money for that set? I didn't. It's just all virtual. The virtual sets come with three different angles, so we have, you do over-the-shoulder shots, you can do interviews on them. They're really cool. All sets and editing software come standard with the Tricasters, so it's not any additional money to purchase those. All sets are customizable. So I actually had my intern last year, we created the press box, which is this one right up here, with the background of the Copland Fieldhouse, so it looked like we were reporting live from the fieldhouse. So again, we could use that background. You could put a video behind there. You could put pictures anywhere in the world. It's really, really cool. This set we use here, we use this one a lot. We film a preview to the paper, so we've got Milton, we have East Milton Square behind here. So yeah, we can use that, too. So I'd like to talk about how the studio could be used even further. We have so many ideas, the possibilities are endless. One thing I'd love to see happen here is a before-school news program. Most high schools in the state have them. We should have one, too. Promotional pieces for the music and drama programs. We do that now at Pierce with Pierce Players. They come right down after rehearsal one day, do a 30-minute interview. We throw it up three, you know, three or four weeks before the play. I'm sure it's been happening since I became, before I became involved, but since we started filming the promos, I've noticed that the plays have been sold out all three days. So that might be helping. Sporting event recaps, so we can go out and film Friday night football games, come back and do a recap about them. One cool thing I saw when I was visiting Waltham is they did a yearbook sales promotion with all the teachers, like running around the school, trying to drum up business. It was a really, really cool idea. Before-school announcements, so I'm not too sure if, when I went here, we had the paper and listened to the microphone box on the ceiling, so maybe we could do that visually, get kids more involved. Important announcements during the day, you know, it's located right off the main floor, right near the principal's office, right near the superintendent's office. It'd be easy, just come in, flip the switch on to address the students. Most of the classrooms have TVs in them anyways. Superintendent happenings, we could do like a, you know, superintendent update, what's going on this week to address parents sooner. School closures and emergencies, I do that now from home, but we could, you know, if there's something going on the day before and we know about it, we could film that. STEM lessons I've seen in other schools, and it's hard for me to explain, but the way I see it is that if there's like a certain blanket STEM lesson that the teachers are learning to teach the children, why couldn't the department head come in, film that lesson, and send it out to the teachers so they can see it, and still have that resource on their computer as well? One, and my last point, one thing that we did two years ago is we had the AP Spanish students from the high school read, I think it was fourth-grade-level Spanish books, so the kids could go home after school, tune in at 4:00 and read along. The students were reading in Spanish, and we had subtitles in English. So that was a cool thing that I'm hoping with the install of the studio, we could do French, American, Spanish, Latin, you know, any language we teach here. Some past partnerships we've already have with the schools that we've been very proud of and would like to keep going. Our big event every year at the schools, we film Iron Chef Junior down in the cafeteria. We filmed the Milken Award presentation live from the Pierce gym, all crewed by Pierce students in my past class. The Boom Rider finale, again, students coming in, talking about the stories they wrote, all filmed by the kids in my past class. Highlight of after-school clubs and activities, Pierce Players promos, 50 Years of Struggle. We do the Milton High School Graduation Senior Awards Night, the robotics competition, the Cunningham Veterans Tribute, and so much more. That's all I could really think of off the top of my head, but we've worked a lot with the schools in the past, and we're really looking forward to continue that relationship. So I have a little highlight reel just to show you how some of the kids have been involved at the Pierce and some of the stuff that we do. So just forgive me, I just have to hit play on the computer, and I'll be right back. So what I wanted to show you, one of the advantages of having our studio in the school system is I'm able to pair students with local hosts that do shows. So right now, Suzette Standings interviewing students at the Pierce about writing. And this is at my studio at the high school. This was from my Pierce Pass class. The students were making a commercial for Mad Science Lab. So again, we just downloaded the picture. This is a preview to the times we do. This is how we utilize virtual sets, and we have rolling clips. So again, that's a good skill to learn, especially if you go into like news production. This is yours truly teaching students at the Pierce after school. So again, we get very interactive with the children. And actually, the students learn, and they're able to teach each other different roles around the studio. That's what's happening here. We've gone into classrooms to film different events, teachers getting awards, students presenting different things. So this is at a science classroom at the middle school. Here's footage from our famous Iron Chef competition. This is when after-school, we were doing a highlight of after-school activities. This was our Pierce news program. We took a crack at it, and the students were interviewing Dr. Spalding on TV. Again, it's just a way for kids to get on-camera, get experience, get involved. This is our Skype interview, so you can see we had, actually, sorry, from Austin, Texas was the most recent one we did. The kids love the green screen. It's the best feature we have. That was the Boom Rider series, where they interviewed Amy Gale at the end. That was my past class, I think it was maybe a year and a half ago, that was my second This is where we're on filming the robotics competition at Cunningham two years ago. It's me teaching the students about storyboarding and getting their ideas down. And that was the Milken Award. That was the crew that helped for about a year filming all the stuff that we did at the middle school. Okay, so now the cost will go through. So for the studio, for the studio equipment, the switching, the lighting, cameras, microphones, all the equipment that's going in, it's going to cost us about $170,000. Looking to install a Mac lab with 15 computers. Currently, it is 30. We're going to go to 15 and look at something, and maybe in a few years, that's going to be $25,000. One thing they were adding that maybe wasn't on the wish list, but we're also going to add accessories and ENG equipment, electronic news gathering equipment. This will allow students to actually take cameras out, go out and film stories, they can go film a sporting event, they can film a news story around town, and then they can come back into the classroom and edit it. So that's huge. That's going to be about $15,000. That's cameras, tripods, microphones, wires, the whole nine yards. So grand total, we're looking at a grand total of donation for install of $210,000. And again, that was voted on by my board of directors to put the studio in at the high school. And my last slide is just my success story. Studio production is very passionate to me. I got...
Your last slide.
Not used to the side of the camera, sorry. So my success story, like I said, I'm very passionate in TV production. I actually started volunteering at Milton Access TV when I was 13 on my grandfather's show. When I got to high school, I volunteered through all four years of high school. I used to live at the studio when it was there. I did my senior, my senior project on TV commercials. I assisted with shows, clubs, after-school activities. I assisted with meeting coverage at night. So after high school, I graduated in 2003, I went to Quinnipiac University in Connecticut. From there, I graduated in '07 with a BA in Mass Communications, with a concentration in TV studio production. I started back at MPEG part-time in September. In March of '09, I went full-time in October, and I was promoted to executive director in 2012. So it can be done. A lot of the studio product, a lot of the times when you go into production fields, it might not be encouraging, the jobs might not be there. You might be looking at news, you might be looking at living in Milwaukee, you know, rewinding tapes from 2:00 to 6:00 in the morning, getting coffee, but there are jobs out there. This is a great way that we can get students involved. This is a great way we can get them set up for production careers, and I think that's all I have. So are there any questions about what I've shown you tonight?
Mike, can you give us a tour of the space, Room 245, at some point?
Sure.
Oh, maybe, well, two things that I wanted to bring up. How many audience members does the new space hold?
So what we did when we were looking at the space is we kind of just pushed all the chairs in the middle of the room, so it can comfortably fit 30.
Okay.
I think it could probably even fit more than that.
Okay.
And we'll have to maybe play around with the layouts of the tables, but it's a big room, and we can certainly take you on a tour of it. We're looking, if this gets approved, we'll be looking to install in August, so we can take you down before or during, but it should be about, I'd say, 30 people.
And one thing that you didn't talk about, that I think is important to this, this great opportunity that we're, that these students are going to have, is I know that you plan on spending a lot of time there and being a resource to both teachers and students, not just the work you have with students, but also with teachers, who are very, the sense I get is they're very kind of excited about having this space as an opportunity to use, either for their classrooms or for their students and things like that. So, you know, that's a big part of it, because you have a great amount of knowledge about this, and it's not going to just be you continuing your work from Pierce here, but also spreading your knowledge to some of our teachers who are eager to learn. So I think that's great.
Yeah, we're not planning on just installing it and handing the key over and saying, "Have a good day."
Exactly.
When I first started at MPEG, we didn't have this setup. We got it in 2012. It took me, I'm still learning. I still am, but I've got a vast knowledge of every feature on here. I'm very excited to work with any of the teachers that want to learn. Like I said, it's the exact studio we have at Pierce, so any teachers that want to come learn beforehand, want to come and get, you know, additional training afterwards, they can come to my office. I plan on being here a lot, and we could open it up to really any teacher that wants to learn, wants to use it.
Yeah.
Ms. Varela.
That was a great presentation. Thanks. Can you just talk a little bit, especially for people at home, how, where the funding's going to come, where the 210 is going to come, that was on the slide?
Sure. So to give the public a little background, so I work for MPEG. We are a nonprofit that works in the town of Milton. We have a contract with the Board of Selectmen to run the local access stations for the town of Milton. The way it's funded, it's funded solely through Comcast subscriptions. It's not taxpayer dollars. So what happens is, is that the revenue that Comcast makes in the town of Milton, the town then gets a portion of that, and the contract that the town has with Comcast, there's a stipulation, and it says, "This funding is going to run your local access stations." And then what the town of Milton did is they went out, they contracted with us, and that's how we received the funding. So we, what we do is we try and spread our funding equally across all three designations on the channels that we have. So we have already put in a big studio at the Pierce that's primarily public. We've been building out different government meeting rooms around town, the Council on Aging, the Blue Room at Town Hall. So this one is coming a little bit later. We haven't done a lot with the schools, but now we're spending money for a studio in high school.
And Mike, you might want to identify the members of the board who have approved this initiative, the members of the MPEG. this initiative, the members of the MPeg board?
Sure. We have a board of nine. President is Bernard Lynch, no relation at all. We have our clerk, Marvin Gordon, our secretary, L.L. Wells, our treasurer, Dr. Frank Giuliano, board member Bruce Pearson, Senator Joyce, Jimmy Mullen, Becky Badera for the schools, and David Burns from the Selectmen. And the vote was unanimous.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
So I just had a couple of questions, Mike. Thank you. That was great. So basically, you're saying this would be the E in the MPeg?
Correct.
Right, okay. So it would be a dedicated channel?
So right now, we've broadcast on three channels on Comcast, three on RCN, 8, 11, and 22. 8 is our government, 11 is our public, and 22 is our educational channel. So right now, on the educational channel, we run your school committee meetings, the graduation, senior awards night, we do the concerts from Pierce in the middle school. So any content that's created in the studio can go right onto 22. We've got plenty of room for it.
That's what I thought you were saying, but I wanted to be sure. And then my question was for Superintendent Gormly, what's in room 245 now? What's it being used for?
It's a computer class now. So we have worked with Becky Badera, and Mike Lynch, and James Jett to talk about next year, looking at the courses that we offer and deciding courses that we could change into electives so that students could during the day go into that lab and use it as an elective. So that would take us a year in the planning, but right now, it's used five periods a day, a computer lab, but we see a full integration of the two. The teacher who's assigned to that room has been integral in the design and fully supportive and sees this as an unbelievable opportunity for Milton Public School students, high school students, and all of our teachers.
Can I just follow up on that? So that would include the current video, I forget what the class is called, but you know the class where they make the...
Absolutely. That's the teacher who teaches that class is assigned in that classroom.
I thought I recognized the room, so I want, because I think that that would be great, because my other question was, how would the kids actually get access to you in the high school? If they, you know, an after-school club might not necessarily be the best way to get kids in, but if it's part of the day...
Right.
Then that would be fabulous, because I know that class, they had to go out with a camera, they had to video, they had to do a game, but then they really didn't know what to do with it.
This is just going to improve that.
Exactly.
And I think we're still kind of in the works as to how it's all going to flow and work together, but I think it'll all work out great in the end.
It'll be really good.
Dr. Donahue? New microphone setup. To go back to your comment about the intercom system for the control room, so is the control room going to be part of that room 245, or is that an offsite?
Let me see if I can pull it up. I do apologize, the control room is not here. In room 245, right here on your screen, this is the main door of the hallway, right here, this is another door, that's the superintendent's conference room. So if you've been in there and see the window blocked up in black, that's the room. Directly across in this back corner here, there's another closet. That's where the control room's going. I don't have, I might have the, I don't have the specific size with me. It's another, it's a big closet, it's same height in the ceilings. It's probably 8 by 20, so that's why we're going to need the intercom system.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Varela.
So just to follow up on Kristen's query, so the staff member that now teaches the video class, if further trainings needed to offer another, a more extensive elective, you could be there to sort of train them to know what they need to know to give it to the students?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, okay.
Ms. Badera.
Yeah, I mean, we've met with at least one of the teachers extensively, and I think, you know, our idea is it definitely has to be used as a classroom. That's why we're putting in the Mac lab and the additional equipment that Mr. Lynch recommended, but it's really to enhance the program we already have, not to like replace anything.
Yeah, what I used to do before, when I started, is when I started the Pierce program, we tried one at the high school. So I actually would come up on block days, which is that 90-minute period. So I'd come up once a week, and we would actually try and teach the students off your school committee card, which isn't too exciting. So, yeah, it's to enhance the program, but we will be able on hand to help with any additional training or things like that.
Mr. Walker.
So first, I'd like to take credit for the significant contributions I've made through my Comcast bill to this. So I think this is, from an educational resources standpoint, this is fabulous, and we should absolutely move with all due speed. Question for perhaps the chair or someone else. The decision, though, about whether we do most of the school committee meetings here or there, I assume is separable, that this is not a tacit decision to do the school committee meetings there without seeing the space and looking at the layout and so on. Is that right?
Yeah, I believe it's a school committee decision on where to hold school committee meetings, and so if we were to change that, it seems to me we would have a vote on where to have the meetings.
Great. Thank you.
And I don't believe, we haven't been asked to take that vote now, and it's not on the agenda, so that'll be sometime in the future.
Great.
Ms. Varela.
Right now, it's less stairs, though. Yeah, I don't mind.
In advance, usually.
Says one of the youngest members on the committee.
All right, well, thank you. Seeing this presentation, working with Mike, but seeing the presentation when we have our beginning days of school, and we have all the staff in the high school auditorium, I think it would be exciting for you to do a brief presentation, for them to know the resource K through 12, if they want to, at the third grade, create a TV show, or they have a presentation that they want to share, I think to meet you, to see you, which we've never really done, all of the staff knowing who you are, it would generate probably more usage than you alone can provide. So on behalf of the schools, we are very, very excited.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you for the inaugural vice chair's report.
Well, all my vice chair's reports will be like this, with donations of $210,000. Or they will not be on the agenda.
All right. Moving on to the report of the chair.
Do we have to vote on this, accepting this donation? I hope that we did.
I don't believe, it's not on the agenda for a vote, so if we need to vote on it, we'll do that at the next meeting.
Okay, all right.
So on to the report of the chair. The first item is, two items related to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. The first is nominations for awards by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Every year, the MAS-C, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, solicits nominations for its various awards for individuals and groups. And so I am seeking on behalf of this school committee, the authority to make nominations for awards, which will be handed out sometime in November, I believe. And so I will move to authorize the chair to make nominations for awards to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Opposed? And, well, it's unanimous. I don't need to do that. Okay. Next, every year, the MAS-C, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, has an annual conference in November, and we appoint a delegate to that conference to learn about various issues in the school committee, and school committees and school affairs. There are various programs, and Ms. Badera maybe can give us a little bit of insight into that. We appoint one delegate, but we can send as many school committee members as wish to attend. So tonight, we're going to discuss the appointment of a delegate, and if there's anyone else interested in going, we can get that information. Or I don't believe this is the last moment to make that decision, so you might make that decision, and we might just do that on the 29th. But we would like to get the delegate appointed if we could, and so the floor is open for discussion. Perhaps Ms. Badera can just give a brief outline, because she's been to the conference before, what happens and how it's beneficial to the school system.
Yeah, I think I've gone the last three or four years. I really enjoy it. There's certainly a lot of presentations, so you kind of have to choose which one you go to. There's a pretty flexible schedule as well. They give you, they outline the schedule, so maybe if you can't get there until the afternoon, or you have to leave early to get home because you have to drive the kids somewhere, or you have to be, you know, you don't want to stay overnight, which I, you know, rarely do, you can do that. I plan on going again this year, because I do find it, I always probably come back with a couple of new ideas that I think are interesting, and Superintendent Gormly sits down with me, and I talk about the conference, and there's always current things that are being discussed, like new things on park, and new things on evaluations, things like that. And it's also a good place to kind of talk with other school committee members. I meet different school committee members from other schools every year. So I would encourage anyone that was interested to consider going, because I know a lot of school committee member, school committees send more than one person. In the past, I think I've gone by myself the last few years, and not that that's not okay, but I would really encourage anybody that was interested. And I think since we have two new members as well, they do do the orientation there as well. So that's in November. If you're not doing it before then, they do have the orientation, I think maybe on the Saturday, and it's not that far. It's at, I think it's in Hyannis. So if anybody's interested or wants to talk more about it, I can give them last year's for sure, just to get an idea of some of the presentations. But I find it very, very useful, and I would be absolutely willing to go again. I would plan on going again this year.
So...
I know the deadline's July 15th for the early, for the reduced rate.
Right, so we can save $100 if we register by July 15th. So what I'd like to do, if the members agree, is to, is if Becky's gone before, and she's going to go again, unless there's objection, move for her appointment as the delegate, and then anyone else who wants to go, just let us know before the 15th, and we'll get you registered to go, if that sounds good. And then after the 15th, it'll be $100 or more, so hopefully we can, anyone who wants to go can decide by then. So any objections to proceeding in that fashion?
Second.
All right. Motion to appoint Ms. Badera as the delegate to the MAS-C Annual Conference has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, that's unanimous. So if anyone else is interested in going, just let us know before the 15th if you can. All right. Facility Subcommittee Appointments. Mr. Walker is the representative of the school committee to the Facilities Subcommittee, and we have a slate of nominations that I will make, and I would like to make them by slate, unless there's any objections. This is the list that has been published previously to the school committee, and I think we have an outstanding slate of reappointments of certain individuals and some new individuals as well. So unless there's objection, I'll move for, I'll nominate the committee members by slate rather than individually. All right. Seeing no objection, the members of the committee that I will nominate for reappointment are Glenn Pavlicek, who is the Assistant Superintendent of Business and has served on the committee previously, Bill Ritchie, who's the head of the Consolidated Facilities Director. Again, he's served on the committee previously, and this would be a reappointment. Joseph Murphy, who was a member of the School Building Committee, is a retired electrician and has served on the committee previously. This, again, is a reappointment. And Rick Molstrom, who is a, runs facilities departments and has been on this committee previously, and is, again, this is a reappointment. Two other individuals, the first of which has been a member of this committee, but it is not technically a reappointment, because she was a member of this committee as a school committee member, but Lynda Lee Sheridan has agreed to serve on the committee as a community member. Lynda Lee was obviously on the school committee for nine years. She served on the Facility Subcommittee, and she was on the School Building Committee. And finally, Mr. Walker was able to convince Tony Chichello to join this committee. Tony is a...
Let me just, if I could just read to the record that when I asked Mr. Chichello to do this, he did say, "My wife will kill me."
So he's risking life and limb in order to help the schools. So Tony is a well-known lawyer, well-known around town, and was chair of the School Building Committee. So I think it's an outstanding slate of candidates, and I will nominate that those appointees to the Facility Subcommittee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, that's unanimous. Next, Summer Planning Session. This is just an update. We are on target for Friday, August 7th, from 2:00 to 4:00. We have the assistance of a, the president-elect of the Massachusetts Association of School Committee has agreed to help us out as a facilitator for that session, so that will be our retreat and planning session, and so we're on target for that. And we have one more meeting prior to that, but we're on target for the Summer Planning Session for August, I believe it's the 7th. It's the 7th, yes, the 7th, which is the Friday. And the next item on the agenda is somewhat related. At the Summer Planning Session at our retreat, we discuss goals and objection, objectives for the coming year. And in our policies, it instructs us as a committee to establish a short list of strategic goals and related objectives for the coming year. And in that policy, it instructs us also at the conclusion of the school year to assess our progress with respect to those objectives. So as we begin to assess the objectives that we set out at the beginning of the year, we have asked the administration to give us some feedback on the progress that has been made with respect to the goals that were published back on October 1st, 2014. And so I will turn it over to Superintendent Gormly to take us through the administration's initial review of these goals as we begin to assess our success and how we proceeded with these goals during the last year. And it's my view that this assessment need not end tonight. We're going to get some information from the administration tonight, and we can certainly review it further, review it further in subsequent meetings. But I thought it would be important to get a start, so Ms. Gormly.
Thank you, Chairman Zulus. So this is a first attempt, looking at your goals, just bringing some of the information forward. So one of your goals, again, for the viewing, public, develop and execute mathematics and science internal...
Excuse me, do we have a handout? Is that in the packet?
Yeah.
Is it in the packet? Oh!
Yeah, your goals are, you can have a copy of this if you'd like. So your first goal was to develop and execute mathematics and science internal assessment capabilities and achievement action plans by using ELA Internal Assessment Model by year-end 2015. And so school committee members had mentioned that through the presentations that our staff present to you through the year, sometimes the information is repeated. So what I've gathered for you with the help of Assistant Superintendents Janet Chan and Glenn Pavlicek, I took from last year's internal data presentation, next steps, and then the next page, Glenn, at the elementary level, and then I took from our data specialist presentation, if you could stand that elementary. So I've paralleled what we planned last summer, what the goals were a year ago, and then at our last presentation, outlining for you what the internal assessments are. And we could have highlighted the area of math and science. Again, for you to go over this for your next discussion, what goals we met in the math and science, the increased number of internal assessments, and to your point, you suggested that we use the ELE model. So I thought this was valuable. These are two presentations you sat through, and they really provided the information to give you the response to this goal. Next, and the same in the PS Middle School, what were the next steps that we outlined a year ago in the, for internal assessments? Where were we going? What goals do we... for internal assessments? Where were we going? What goals do we set for ourselves? And then from our presentation at our last School Committee meeting, what the increased number of goals were, and again, your goal is increasing the assessments in math and science to parallel the work that we had been doing in language arts. And lastly, I paralleled the same for Milton High School. What were our goals a year ago in the world of internal assessments? And then bringing you up to completing at the high school. And I was struck by this, because I think school committee members had mentioned that the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school did a tremendous amount of work on internal assessments, and that work has increased at the high school during this last year, and especially in math and science. So just giving you something to begin with for your further discussions. That was actual data from presentations that were given to you. Next, if I go through these and then you go back in any discussion that you want to have. The next goal is develop and execute a comprehensive plan for all students in grades six through twelve to monitor, assess, and support the social-emotional well-being and life skill preparation by year-end 2015. So I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Janet Chan to detail our response to the work that's been done in this area.
So former Chairman Walker led the effort to implement this goal. We met with former Chairman Walker and Karen Cahill, who is the Department Chair of Guidance. And we reviewed guidelines that are provided by the Department of Education on implementing social and emotional learning curricula. We looked at the Massachusetts Health Curriculum Framework standards, the American School Counselor Association standards. We looked at the existing district curriculum programs that we currently implement, and we also looked at assessments currently administered. We also noted that we did not have a social-emotional curriculum in place at the elementary level, while we did a number of years ago. The new bullying, anti-bullying legislation has actually required schools to come up with a plan and address that legislation. And what we really ended up doing was replacing our former social skills curriculum with the anti-bullying curriculum. So we identified a need at the elementary level, and while the goal reads that we would come up with a comprehensive plan for all students in grades six to twelve, we did discuss that there are needs K to twelve. We also discussed that while we would need to have a number of constituencies review curriculum and identify needs, come up with an assessment plan as well that we may need to the end of 2015, rather than fiscal year fifteen, to maybe accomplish this goal. So we additionally created a timeline to meet the goal. We presented to the full leadership team where we are with our current assessment and curriculum. We also informed the site councils, teachers, Health and Wellness Subcommittee. We met with the CPAC, and we invited a representative to meet with our, while it is not an official Subcommittee, our committee of Karen Cahill and committee representatives, Mr. Walker, and Ms. Bader, who joined us in the process. We met with CPAC, and then at that time asked them to join us for updates on our progress towards meeting the goal, and also asked for their input, which led to a number of requests on their part for involvement. In the meantime, we have also had a school committee member express her interest in bringing her expertise to the efforts to meet this goal on social-emotional learning, and that would be Ms. Bagley Jones. So what we did was, we also included here as an update that the Youth Risk Behavior Survey was administered. We are now in the process of, we have conducted an analysis of this survey, and we're in the process of creating a plan to communicate the results of that that survey to the, to parents and the public. We formed a committee to review elementary curriculum programs. That committee represents teachers and adjustment counselors from all of the elementary schools. They have reported back on some of the curriculum programs, and our plan is, in the fall, when school reopens, that we will share that information with teachers. I will say at this time that there seemed to be a great interest in reinstating the second step curriculum. As long as it's been updated, which it has, so some of the teachers who are familiar with that know that it did need some updating when they last used it, so there have been many changes in that program. So we'll look forward to sharing that with faculty across the district in the fall. Also in process would be to adjust curriculum and instruction according to the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Select a program. Make a decision about a program. Make a recommendation to the superintendent. And of course, along with those recommendations would be determining budget implications, what would be the scheduling needs, who will implement the program at the elementary level, and how will we, how will we implement that plan? That was our update on the social-emotional learning goal.
Glenn, do you want to take the next goal?
The next goal is narrowing academic proficiency and participation gaps, including by subgroups and by French-English programs by year-end fiscal seventeen. This is information, again, taken from Dr. O'Dwyer's presentation back in February, that her analysis showed that there was, the student demographics differed across English and French immersion programs, but when matched students were compared, similar, students of similar characteristics had similar MCAS scores, regardless of which program they were in. Her recommendation was we needed to do a better job of marketing the program more, marketing the programs to more, a diverse group of students. And in conjunction with that, with our English STEM initiatives, what you've seen here is, two years ago, we had forty-six percent of incoming first graders, of first graders in English. This current year, it's fifty-four percent. Next fall, according to the numbers we have right now, it'll be fifty-seven percent in English versus forty-three percent in French. So you're seeing quite the sea change in interest. We have not yet broken out demographics to see if this is diversifying classes more or not, but this is ongoing work in progress. The trend even going into next fall is interesting.
So to Dr. Pavlicek's point, we've assigned our data specialists to analyze this incoming first grade in the last years around the diversity and the gender issues and the low-gain communities. And also, your goal had asked for subgroup data, but we'll have to wait for our PARC examinations, results to come back to provide you with just the degree to which we're narrowing those proficiency gaps. Next, you had asked us to develop and execute a digital technology strategy for academic achievement for grades K through five by fiscal year 2016, and I'm going to begin. Thank you. I'm going to begin, and then Assistant Superintendent Chan will take over. Again, this work has been led by Dr. Angela Burke, and there were exciting initiatives system-wide. As Dr. Burke refers to our scholars in grades two through five, were given individual user accounts on Google platform to facilitate the safe creation of sharing children's work. Very exciting stories came out of the elementary schools. Scholars in grades two through five were exposed to the use of Google Classroom in a form of electronic submission of assignments and projects. Scholars in grade three through five had a tremendous amount of tutorial and sessions this year, preparing them for PARC. The PARC technology, the drop-down features in the PARC exam, the tutorials that our students were given leading up to PARC, and so that when these students sat down at their Chromebooks or their desktops, they had a familiarity. The scholars in K through two utilized iPads to enhance the instruction and development of writing. This was a very exciting project partnering with MFE, that teachers were given iPads, and we provided the training part, we did the training. The MFE doesn't provide the professional development, and our teachers did an unbelievable job. It's a further bullet down to, to actually sit down on these internal assessments that are given and use the iPad for the data collection. It was phenomenal. Teachers were also trained in the use of Google Drive and Google Classroom for more uniform rollout. We talked about that at the last meeting. And students, teachers utilized iPads as, through this partnership with the MFE, a method of data collection. And Dr. Burke detailed for her plans for 2015, sixteen, and again, this is targeted through your goal in the elementary school.
Okay, so the plan for the next school year is much of the same, given that we have teachers who are on various learning continuums for their implementation and integration of technology in the classroom. So students will continue to utilize their individual Google accounts. The district technology specialist will explicitly teach the use of Google products, including Google Docs, Google Sheets, and Google Slides. This will be, of course, support not only for students, but also for teachers. Students will continue to access electronic assignments via Google Classroom. They will receive feedback electronically from teachers. We have seen this in action already in some of the classrooms. It is very, very exciting. Students can go home and work on a project and receive immediate feedback from their teachers, and come into the classroom ready to, you know, ready to move on at their own pace. Google Classroom, again, will allow teachers to differentiate assignments. The students will use Classroom as a form of electronic communication, and will also receive class announcements and updates. The plans also for next year, teachers will receive training on how to record and upload lessons for reteaching class content. Students and teachers will continue to have training in the administration of PARC, in the use of PARC technology tools. We will continue to use iPads at the K to two level. There, as the science curriculum in grade four is introduced this year, however, the iPads are a critical component of that, so we have our our science curriculum coordinator who is working on that at the present time. Teachers will receive support in having students create digital presentations and portfolios utilizing the devices appropriate at their grade levels, and again, the focus has been to have our K to two children use the iPads, and our students in three to five to use the Chromebooks for most of their projects. We're going to increase the number of teachers who are going to use Doceri to deliver classroom instruction, connect it to their smart boards. And again, we're going to increase the number of teachers who are going to use iPads for data collection in the classroom.
Glenn, do you want to take the next?
One other goal was to develop a rolling three-year financial academic operations capital plan. We have partnered with the Town of Milton, five-year financial forecasting, and hopefully with the implementation this summer and early fall of the new financial system of the town, this will be a little more easy to do. Through the Capital Planning Improvement Committee, we have a five-year capital plan that rolls every year, and the issue with this plan very much is to tie it all together, and we're hoping that the Strategic Issues Subcommittee will help to identify some issues that will allow us to determine some of the academic operations, that we're able to put these plans together into a coherent strategy, as opposed to individual strategies.
And lastly, to develop and execute elementary school marketing plans that document program offerings, communicate academic success, and generate and sustain demand by year-end school year fifteen. And so we're going to work on individual school marketing or branding ideas this summer. But to me, I internalized this goal was really tied in to the success of our English STEM pathways strand. A tremendous amount of effort on behalf of the school district and professional development with the training, with the teachers, and this STEM program, as I say, parents, Milton Public School parents vote with their feet, and they're very smart consumers. So if we referred back to choice, so many parents are telling us that the English pathways with the STEM initiative and the French program, how the STEM initiative has enhanced the English program. And so I think that those percentages speak for themselves, and I would just tell you, the work that was done, fully communicating to the public, the offerings that exist in the Milton Public School, proved to have, that a very successful choice program happened this year in the Milton Public Schools. And I'm happy to say today, almost to a parent, Glenn, almost to a parent, parents have enrolled, and new residents have enrolled in the first grade programs. And as I say publicly, we're a very small town. Most parents were able to attend the school of their choice for their child, and if not, the program of their choice. And again, this really has been an effort on behalf of, with the support of this school committee, thinking back four years ago when we were talking about implementing STEM in the first grade, and now it's going to roll out into the fourth grade next year. So we have work to do this summer on the marketing plans for, the branding for each of our elementary schools, and really communicating to the public. I often say that the success of the Milton Public Schools is that programs that happen in the third grade at one school happen across town. And so, but we're four different continents or countries, I fondly refer to. But there has to be, again, you're a school district, and you want all of our students and children provided the same opportunities. So this is initiative that we're going to be working on this summer.
Thank you, Superintendent Gormley, and Assistant Superintendent Chan, Assistant Superintendent Pavlicek. This is a lot of information to digest, but I think it is helpful as we begin to assess those goals. I would point out, just because it's the last slide, that some of the goals are more long-term. I think that rather than SY, it was supposed to be CY, or it was supposed to be calendar year fifteen, that goal. So some of them are more long-term goals. Some of them, one of them was, in terms of the plans, was an FY seventeen. So I think when we assess those, we assess the progress. And given the amount of information that we've received just tonight, perhaps it's best to have some discussion and some questions, but we can discuss these goals and discuss and assess the progress at a future meeting or meetings, perhaps the twenty-ninth, perhaps the fourth. So with that, I will open the floor to any questions. I know it's a lot to digest all at once. Ms. Bader?
I just have one question about the new teachers receiving iPads, fifty new teachers. How will that be decided upon? Is it, I think in the past, we've had training opportunities, and the faculty that went to those training opportunities received the iPads. Is it something similar?
Yes, the same kind of plan. Will be the, yes, the same kind of plan.
And so I think that's important to repeat for the viewing public, that how the decision made about who was going to receive these iPads. The teachers commit to professional development, to time beyond their contractual day has to be associated with, with the receiving of the iPad.
Okay.
And so, our goal is full rollout of all teachers. So as I said, all children benefit, all teachers benefit, and all children benefit from those teachers who have the training.
Ms. Verella.
Could you speak a little bit to the new science program that you mentioned about fourth grade, and that it would be delivered and via, I guess, the Chromebooks, because three, five is getting the Chromebooks, or if you could speak to that? And so, would, would all the lessons, you know, be via, and the kids do their work on the Chromebooks, or, just to explain that a little bit? That'd be great.
To Ms. Verella's point, if I might ask the chair if Bernadette Moonen might come to our next summer meeting and give you an overview of what that fourth grade STEM program's going to look like. I think she could do a better job than I could. And we did a tremendous amount of research this year, we're one year behind in the planning, and so I think it would be great for the viewing public and all the parents in both programs, if that would be all right.
If she's available on the 29th.
Bernadette, come and do a presentation on fourth grade STEM.
So just, just clarifying, is it, is it STEM, or is it the science, the regular science curriculum?
Great question. It's STEM. So the regular, the science in its, I appreciate this clarification. Your advancement budget purchased the text materials and supplies for grades three, four, and five, these FOS kits. And we did a partial implementation this year because of the tremendous amount of professional development that had to go with putting these kits in and all the materials and the work with the teachers, so that all students have these science units. And then within these science units, Bernadette will explain to you that there are STEM strains. So French or English, all of the students have science, and these FOS kits are unbelievable. The FOS kits are what we've implemented at the middle school. And I want to tell you, remember, the science MCAS scores, state MCAS, everything else changed, and we've gotten the first multiple choice back, the open response haven't come back, and indications are, Dr. Karen Spalding, our science guru, has always said, if you give the teachers the text materials and supplies and science and the professional development, and that's what your advancement budget did. So, but in the English Pathways Program, you remember, we started with our, we do first grade STEM program, then we went into the programming at second grade, and then the third grade program this year. Next year, it's going to be Project Lead the Way, and so I'll have Bernadette come and really detail that, that program. That STEM program, again, parents understand, they make a choice, and the school committee urged us, along with parents, to have that STEM night. Phenomenal number of parents coming out, be, really, they wanted to see the program choice, Ms. Verella, that they were making for the children. So everybody has, it's a very important point. Everyone has the standards that are associated with STEM, but in the English Pathways, it's an enhancement.
Get more, get me? Okay, great.
I'll invite Bernadette.
Mr. Walker.
So I, I'll reserve my specific comments, I think, as you said, for the, probably for the retreat. This particular version of the school committee goals, I don't think is the final version. I don't think it reflects the feedback from, particularly from members, Padere, Bagley-Jones. We had a fairly robust discussion about the social-emotional goal, and so I thought we posted those, but I, I can send those around. I still have that. The second thing is, we, we probably should orient the new members regarding the state-mandated evaluation model that we're using now for the superintendent and for our teachers, which is a model that includes a two-year cycle. So when we drafted these goals and approved them back in October, the superintendent wisely crafted her goals based on that, and we're in the middle of a two-year cycle, which began July 1, 2014, and runs through June 30, 2016. So this year, Chairman Zulus will be leading a mid-cycle review, but we, we, you should know about that, and we should take that into account as we talk about goals, because certainly we don't want to change the rules of the game mid-cycle. The only thing I want to comment tonight is that I would take some issue with, is the, the statement that the Strategic Issues Subcommittee will determine the academic operations plan. I would argue that the considerable work that the superintendent, her team, and the school committee have put in regarding advancement initiatives clearly states our academic priorities. And in addition, in the five-year financial plan, we took great pains to talk about priorities, academic priorities, that we wanted to protect over the five-year period. So at the very least, I would say that we have a clear academic operations plan now, and I would hope that the Strategic Issues Subcommittee would help us to enhance that plan, but I certainly wouldn't want to suggest that we don't have one, and they'll help us determine what the first one is.
Anything else? All right. So it, it seems to me that, again, given the amount of information, this is, this is something to be continued. Perhaps, as Mr. Walker suggests, we can continue the discussion at the retreat on the 4th. So if, and if there's nothing else on this, we can move on. All right. The next item on the agenda is listed as policy subcommittee report. That may be a misnomer, because I don't know that our newly-commissioned policy subcommittee has had the opportunity to meet. So as a legacy member of the policy subcommittee, I will take the, I will take the reins on this, unless there's any objection. All right. This is the, what you have in front of you, in your packet, is a two-page document listed, JFAA, that's the policy number, and listed residency policy. The first page of that is a clean copy, and this, again, is the second reading. We, we reviewed this policy last time, at our last meeting, and we had some feedback on it, and some, a desire to see a red line of the changes to the current policy. And that red line is the second page of what you have in front of you, and the red markings show the additions to the existing policy. And so, in shorthand, the existence, the, the revisions are, first, to clarify that the school district may pursue dismissal and restitution for persons who do not reside in the town of Milton. And the second major change is to provide, as has been recommended and requested by the administration, to provide for students re-establishing residency when they enter grade six, grade nine, and for having out-of-district enrollees to re-establish residency on an annual basis. So those are the changes to the existing policy that are before you for consideration tonight in our second reading, and hopefully we will get, well, I will make a motion, so we will have a vote, one way or the other, if it's seconded, we will have a vote.
Second.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I was going to ask for discussion, but I'll go ahead and make the motion. So I will move for approval of the revised residency policy as you have before you, and that motion has been seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Bagley-Jones.
Yeah.
Reestablish, yep.
And then the other question I had, and this may be off-topic, so don't worry about it. Are there other, I think it's a good idea that we talked about before, about the re-establishing residencies at those age, those school grades. Do we know if there are other communities that do that?
Yes.
Like, give me an example of one. I mean, are there a lot, are there a few, or there, because it would just be interesting to be able to answer that to parents.
You know, I'll get you the correct answer.
Both who say you should be doing that, and other parents who say, why do I have to do that?
I'll give you the correct answer with the comparative.
I mean, that doesn't really impact the policy, but I would be, like that information.
I'll give you that. It's a good question. I'll give all of you the information. And we are pending you approving this policy. We have a letter prepared to go out that hasn't been run off yet, and we're going to run evening hours to facilitate parents. So we're putting out the actual office hours of the registrar, and she'll work flexer hours one night a week.
Dr. Donahue.
I, as a, as a new member of the reconstituted policy subcommittee, I remember somebody mentioned at the last meeting, I forget which member, that they wanted to see the actual verbiage of the Massachusetts general laws. So I, I did not have a chance to forward that out prior to our meeting, but I have copies of that, if anybody would like to peruse it while we discuss this matter at this time.
Great.
And might I suggest, in terms of considering the changes to the existing policy, the policy subcommittee is well within its scope to review the statute and to make other suggestions with respect to the policy going forward. What's before us tonight is just those red line changes that relate to establishing residency and clarifying the, the opportunity to dismiss and seek restitution. So, so certainly, if there are other changes that the policy subcommittee thinks are warranted in light of the statute, that's something that, that can be reviewed and considered, considered going forward. But, but I would suggest that, I don't know that we need to, we need to review the statute in front of us in connection with, with these suggested changes.
I would, I would, I would reiterate my support for the amended policy, and I would, I would simply point out, I believe the comment at the previous session was, was made to ensure that our updated policy is, is highly concordant with the relevant sections in, of the Massachusetts general law. I believe they are, there are large portions of the text that, that appear verbatim or near verbatim. So I, I bring this up to allay those fears that, that may have existed.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
Could somebody say, maybe more for the viewing public, but also for us, where the second part of the red, you know, the second red, sorry, I'm not feeling well, so I'm not speaking very clearly. This second part came from where we're asking parents entering grade six and seven and nine to, like, where did that come from? I remember where it came from, but I don't think others.
Well, do you want to go for, you, you share?
Oh, I thought you meant me.
No, no, it came, this, it came from the PTO, the, the superintendent PTO leaders meet, meetings once a month, that several of the parents from the various PTOs brought it up as an issue that, that, you know, for whatever reasons, that, that there's no revisitation to this whatsoever, and a lot of people, you know, scuttlebutt around town, or things of that, saying they don't live here anymore, this, that, and the other thing. And, and it's true that even, especially with everyone going green, and a lot of people can have the same email address that they did when their child was in kindergarten. So, so a lot of things just get emailed and don't get mailed, and things like that. So, and, and also, I will say that some of the parents at that meeting, because next year, as we've all mentioned, is quite, quite possibly an override year, and, you know, how many, how much does it cost per student? You want to guarantee that everyone in K-12 is a resident of the town. So it was an issue that was funneled up through the various parents at those meetings as a concern from the various parental groups.
And if I might, we have students who we tuition out, those who watch town meeting, no, and town meeting members, to Norfolk Agricultural School and Blue Hills Regional. And last year, we had all the students who had left us going into the ninth grade at Blue Hills Regional, and three of those students had moved out of town, and we were being charged with their tuitions. So this is a process that we have to put in place, that every year, just to have the students that we're tuitioning out re-register, and the children who are in out-of-district placements have, those students' families also do a re-registration process. So anyone who isn't here. And I feel that all the students rising into sixth and rising into nine is a very fair, we're not identifying one school, one grade, one family. We're doing it those, two, I call them the transition years.
Thank you. That's helpful.
And then I would always, also point out with respect to the language, notwithstanding the typo, this has been vetted by legal counsel, that language. Mr. Walker.
And the first red line change addresses the point that you raised last time, and I agreed with, that temporary residence was too narrow a focus.
That's correct.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Anything further? All right. The motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? It's unanimous. Onto the finance subcommittee report.
So we have a vendor warrant for approval. I'll ask Dr. Pavelcheck to give us the amount and the number, and then I'll need someone else to make the motion for approval, because I haven't had a chance to review this particular warrant.
We actually have two.
Okay.
There was a vendor warrant number 53 dated July 2nd, for $373,306.03. And the one today is vendor warrant number 54 dated July 9th, for $152,349.51.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion on warrant 53, if you'd like, Mr. Walker, or...
Thank you.
So I'll move for approval of warrant 53, the amount of $373,306.03. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? The vote is unanimous. The next warrant, I am in the same position as Mr. Walker, so I will ask, and certainly anyone who wants to make a motion can, I will ask Dr. Pavelcheck, is this something that we could vote on? Just for my purposes, is this something we could vote on at the, at the next meeting on the, on the 28th? Or is there a fiscal year implication here?
There's not, as long as I get signatures.
Right.
This has to be at Town Hall tomorrow morning.
Okay.
As long as we get signatures on it, we can, we can hold on the vote and authorize it after the fact on the vote, but I would need the signatures.
Understood.
By tomorrow morning.
Understood.
Just on that note, this warrant of July 9th, because of processing time, had to be finished at the end of last week, and of course, the end of last week was July 4th, which meant it was finished on July 3rd. Needless to say, we did not have all the bills from fiscal 15 arrive in time for July 3rd to be on the current warrant. So warrant number 55, the final warrant of 2015, will be ready on Friday morning, and will have to be processed at Town Hall no later than Monday noon time, which doesn't give us a lot of time. However, luckily, the newly reconstituted policy subcommittee, containing three members of this committee, will be at, have a meeting on Friday afternoon at 2:00. So hopefully, I only need one more person, other than the policy subcommittee, to try to come by on Friday afternoon, hopefully, if not, on Monday morning, and sign the warrant so we can get it to Town Hall, and that will close the fiscal year. That would be the final warrant of fiscal 15. The, everything has to be processed, and out by the 15th, Town Hall has to have it on the morning, Monday morning of the 13th, in order to pay it on the 14th. So we're under a rather tight timeline.
So I'll commit to you that if you get your three signatures on 55 on Friday afternoon, I'll do it, I'll come by either Friday afternoon or Monday morning and be the fourth. But, back to warrant 54, does anyone want to make a motion on that, or are we comfortable just waiting until some of us haven't had a chance to review it until the next meeting?
I'm waiting.
Looks like we're comfortable waiting. So we're, we've approved 53, and we're gonna, we're gonna wait on the vote for, on 54 and 55 until the 29th.
Just for your information, at this moment, at a $39.8 million budget, we have about 100... $150,000 in encumbered expenditures that we haven't received bills for and we have approximately $150,000 left of our budget with bills coming in to be paid this week and two days' worth of salary from last week for certain groups. We will close out the year without an issue and I'll give you a full report on that after we do, but at this point, we are not, not concerned about the closeout.
So I believe we're on to the minutes. And so you have in your packets, five sets of minutes that we deferred from the last meeting because that meeting went rather long. And so you have, first before you, the minutes of September 10, 2014. So I will move for approval of the minutes of September 10, 2014. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Walker, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? And two abstentions, 402, with Dr. Donahue and Ms. Varela abstaining. Next, we have the minutes of April 23, 2014. I will move approval of those minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Walker, seconded. Any discussion? Ms., Ms. Padera?
On the second page, Ms. Padera stated that because the program was self-sustaining financially, it would increase costs. It should be not increase costs.
Very critical, "not," that a, that a very inaccurate scrivener must have missed. All right. With that amended, with that amendment, any further discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor? And opposed and abstained, so 402 is the vote with Dr. Donahue and Ms. Varela abstaining. And now, a meeting that we all attended, the minutes for April 29, 2015. I will move approval for those minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Varela, seconds. Fabulous. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Fabulous. All right. Minutes for May 20, 2015. Again, a, a, a meeting of this newly reconstituted school committee. So I'll move approval of the minutes of May 20, 2015.
Second.
Do I have a second? Mr. Walker, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? 6-0, unanimous. And finally, the minutes of June 10, 2015. Again, all of us attended, oh, all of us attended except Ms. Bagley-Jones. So I will move approval for the minutes of June 10, 2015.
Second.
Do I have a second? Ms. Padera, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed and abstentions, 5-0-1, with Ms. Bagley-Jones abstaining. Thank you very much for that. Old business, Citizen Speak topic response. Any members have anything on that? Administration? Nothing without objection. We'll move on. Next meeting agenda items, we have one to see, so far, to see if Ms. Concanon, I'm sorry, not Ms. Concanon, Ms. Moonen can report on the request of Ms. Varela. Any other next meeting agenda items? That's for July 29, I believe is the date. Mr. Walker?
I'd like to continue and hopefully close out our discussion on headline and ensure that we have a strategy for September that will allow us to meet our commitment to parents, that there is a single online place where they can get homework, assignment, and grade information.
Homework. All right. We will include that on the, on the agenda. Any other items? Ms., Ms. Gormly?
Mary Kelly, when she was a member, had asked, and we were going to quarterly begin to list all the grants from the Milton Foundation for Education, tonight's MPeg grant, Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital grant. So if we start the next meeting, I will provide you in the packet the detail and it should be just like the vendor warrants, accepting four times a year and we'll make that the first, our first time doing that.
So that's approval of the grants, acceptance of the grants?
Acceptance, yes.
Acceptance of the grants. Okay. And we'll have that information for the packets that go out on Friday.
Right.
Okay, great. And then also, in connection with, in connection with the new cash management policy, and this is something that Mary Kelly had brought up, but we're going to review the regulations and review how things proceeded with cash management. And so, so I think it, I don't think it would be too much to put that on the agenda as well for the next meeting, to have that follow-up.
Chairman?
Dr. Donahue?
Well, we also need to schedule a vote regarding MPeg's proposal to change the studio here at the high school or?
You know, I didn't ask on the timeline and so I don't, maybe, maybe Becky knows what the timeline is for that and whether we need to do that at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that they want to move ahead pretty quickly in installing the summer so that the program, so that the room is ready for the fall class, start of classes. So I think that we need to vote to accept that donation, so we should do that at the next meeting.
Okay. So, but I think, and we'll do that, but I think what Dr. Donahue was driving at was the place of the meetings? Am I wrong about that?
No, no, no. Specifically the, to accept their.
Their donation.
Donation.
So you two understood and I just totally, I was totally off.
Make a pile of all list of donations and grants.
Yes. Okay, great. Any other next meeting agenda items? Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Mike, I don't remember if I talked to you about it or somebody else, but the idea of trying to build in some time around the financial budget aspect, you made me think of it with the cash management piece, that we have, you know, two new members on the committee, we're looking at some possible, maybe some override issues next year, maybe some budget cuts. Would it be helpful for us to try to get some discussion going around what, how the budget gets developed? We talked about that, right?
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
I'm trying to remember what we talked about.
Yep.
And I don't know the best way to do that. I don't want to put an undue burden on the administrative team, but I do think it would be good to start talking about some of this somehow.
I think it's, oh, go ahead. Mr. Walker?
I think the Finance Subcommittee could work with Dr. Pavlichek to put together a presentation that would at least start that discussion.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Is that something you think we can do for the 29th or do?
Yes.
Okay. Great. All right. So we'll put that on.
I would love to do that.
Well, because I'm part of the Finance Subcommittee and.
Well, I volunteered you.
I noticed. That's why I was trying to, I was trying to be, I was accepting, like, my enthusiasm didn't show enough.
Good summer fun.
All right. We don't have anyone here for Citizen Speak. So the last item we have is just to go into executive session and I just want to make sure that, that I make the right motion because the purpose of this executive session is the, is a consideration of, or receipt of minutes. And so I will move that we will, we would go into executive session for the purpose of review of records from previous executive sessions, publication, the purpose of which, the purpose of which is to prevent publication, which would defeat the purpose of prior executive sessions. So that's the motion, as tortured as it was. So I will ask for a roll call vote unless anyone needs me to restate it more clearly. Do you need, okay, let me restate it more clearly.
I have no idea what you said.
All right. I will move, I'm moving to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session at the end, at the end of executive session. The purpose of the executive session is to consider prior minutes of executive session. And if we were to do that in public session, it would defeat the purpose of prior executive sessions.
Makes sense.
Does that make sense?
Uh-huh.
Okay. So that's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Varela. Roll call vote, Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Zuliches? Ms. Padera?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr., Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
We are adjourned for executive session and our meeting is completed and we will, our meeting is completed and we will see you again on July 29. Thank you very much.